Okay, welcome. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of meeting with council to discuss BTA negotiation. We have also a student appeal and Garden Street update. So I need a motion please and a second. Eric and Scott. Just write down the time. Okay. And all those in favor? Motion passes four zero. Thank you. Okay, welcome back. I need a motion and a second to open our board session. Carrie and Brian, thank you. All those in favor? We are five zero. Motion passes. Thank you. Eric and Mary both had their engagements, so we'll go to Steve. And I'd like to ask our student representative to start us off with a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge is to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic, where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we begin this evening with administrative remarks.
Thank you. Good evening. My first comment has to do with changes to the immunization laws. In June of 2019, Public Health Law 2164 was amended to repeal non-medical exemptions for vaccination requirements for students who attend public or private K-12 schools. Since that time, our school nurses, in addition to Mrs. Kennedy, our Director of PPS, have worked to notify families who were impacted by this change. They have gathered and recorded the necessary documentation and has worked with the building administrators to support students and families. So last week was our first of many deadlines stipulated by the law. So I would just like to thank our nurses staff for their diligence, professionalism, and ongoing care for our students. They put in a lot of extra hours to make sure not only that we were in compliance, but that families and students were supported. So I would just like to thank our nurses district wide. At the high school, we have Tarien Lisa and Shirley Ciatola. The middle school, Ellen Quinn and Erin Hecht. At TV Star, we have Elizabeth Regal and Arnie Nordstrom. And at JFK, the one and only Cindy Lockman. So we very much appreciate their efforts and wish to acknowledge this as one more example of the essential role that they play for us. And my final comment has to do with the three through eight math and ELA assessments. Families of students who took the assessments in the spring of last year can expect a letter and report home either by the end of this week or early next week. So the letter is from us, and it explains how we use these assessment results to determine the type of supports that students may need in ELA or in math. The report itself is developed by the State Education Department and tells a little bit more about the assessment itself and what the performance means. So as we have for years in this district, we use these results as one piece of information as part of a larger picture of who a student is as a learner. And if a family has any questions regarding these assessments, they can contact either Mrs. Andrea Lo or Mr. Park at the most. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harrington?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. The board and the public may note that there was a last minute, we withdrew resignation from Ms. Jenny Alvarado. So on occasion with Putnam County and the civil service, there were instances where situations arise in which there was question around canvassing the list, and we learned late this afternoon that we were able to maintain Ms. Alvarado's political appointment as our receptionist by member receptionist here in the district office. So the board and the public will note that that resignation has been accepted.
So it's not on the current for tonight? It's for every given?
It's currently Wednesday.
Okay, good. No dictation. Thank you. And move on to Mr. Carlson.
Yes, good evening. That's great news, Mr. Harrington. Jenny's been a great addition to the district office staff here, so we're very pleased to hear that. Believe it or not, I have budget news, 2020 budget news. I'm excited to get into that already. So one encouraging, one not so encouraging. The estimated average contribution rate for the employees' retirement system, that's the pension contribution system that applies to our non-certificated staff, so mostly our SEIU employees and our fire goal employees. That rate is going to remain stable, contribution rate of 14.6 percent. So although it's a little high, fortunately, it's not going up any further. So that's encouraging news going into 2021. Some not so encouraging news, the Consumer Price Index, which is one of the many components of the tax cap formula, is projected to increase at just 1.5 percent. So often we hear there's a 2 percent tax cap. We've been trying to scrape the top of the mountains by now. There's no such thing as a 2 percent tax cap. However, 2 percent would play into the formula if the Consumer Price Index were greater than 2 percent. However, the formula is limited to the lesser of the change in CPI, which at this point is projecting at 1.5 percent. So that's what we're looking at for next year. CPI, of course, is subject to change over the next three months, September through December, and we'll know in late January what the actual change in CPI is. So we'll continue to monitor that. The audit committee met this morning to review the internal audit report and the external audit or financial statement report. Both of those reports will be submitted to the Board of Ed for acceptance at the October 15 meeting, along with the presentation from our external loggers. An update on tax collection. We're continuing to monitor cash flow. The new tax bills have been sent out, so residents have received their tax bills and have actually begun making those payments, so that's very encouraging. We're going to continue to monitor our cash flow in hopes that we can avoid tax anticipation note. We're very hopeful. I reached out to the Commissioner of Finance from Putnam County, and he informed me that they were reaching out to the mortgage escrow companies, which represent the largest payers of property taxes, and encouraged them to stick to the September 30 deadline that was initially established. And he said that communications with them were favorable, so we're hoping that that will affect or impact our cash flow in positive work. But of course, we'll continue to monitor that throughout this process, but it is encouraging as of now. And actually, one other item. So at the last board meeting, I mentioned that we may have a ribbon cutting for the baseball and softball field. Subsequent to that, we met, Mr. Barado and I met with members of the Brewster Sports Foundation collectively. We decided to defer the ribbon cutting until the spring sports season, so it'll be more of a kickoff to the baseball and softball seasons. As soon as the Section One sports schedule is developed and sent out, we'll then identify that date and then communicate that well in advance of the ribbon cutting. So I apologize for having that information right at the last meeting, but wanted to clarify for tonight. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Dr. Vanlo, I have a few updates for the board. We completed our open houses at JFK and TV Star. I want to thank the principals and their staff, PT executive boards. It was a great outpouring of parents coming out. It was a really great start to the school year. So thank you to JFK and TV Star and all the parents who came out to partner with us in their child's educational journey. It's critical that we work in partnership with parents. Also, next week, we have our Wells Middle School and Brewster High School open house. Please, just want to remind the board that I thank you also for coming out, board members, to those open houses, so we have those next week. And the district, just an update from our athletic department. The district received high praise from the athletic department regarding our football meeting last Friday night with John Jay Crosser, Hernan, who are a big part of that with the cheering section. But John Jay's had told our athletic director, Mr. Barado, who shared with me over the weekend, that they noted the district for its incredible school spirit and great representation of students and staff, and they just thought it was just fantastic. So I want to just thank the entire, Mr. Barado's and Ms. Holer's entire crew for the great job that they did. The game was, even though we didn't win, it was just a wonderful evening. And don't forget, this is Spirit Week. We have Spirit Week at the board office, also just so you're aware. And Friday night, we should have come out with homecoming game. That's it. Thank you. So just a reminder, I mentioned this at the last meeting, that actually this Thursday, we're going down, what's your name, the school boards has their Legislative Action Committee, and they'll be discussing the resolutions that'll be of the NISBA that we'll be voting on. And so our next meeting, I'll come back with that information, and we can then discuss, and you can tell me how you want me to vote. And then we'll be discussing shortly our goals. But just a comment that we had a work session, which is a public work session, which allowed us to just have a discussion on those goals. And tonight, we do our formal presentation for the school year. And I think that's it for now, for me. So can we move on to, to Aaron?
Thank you. So just got a short list of items from the high school this week. As Dr. Vanlo mentioned, it's Spirit Week at the high school. Today was USA Day, so students dressed up in red, white, and blue. This Friday is homecoming, a game against Pecy. Go Bears! So the high school's open house is next, it's October 2nd at 6:30. The practice SAT for all 10th and 11th graders will be on October 16. And then finally, myself and fellow senior Andrew Fabio have been named National Merit Scholarship semifinalists.
Good note, Dan. Thank you. So now we move on to presentations, recognition, discussion, and we start off with the Eagle Scout project update. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me again. I'm from Board of Education and audience members. My name is Nick Haywood. For those of you that don't remember or weren't here, December was when I last presented this. My Eagle Scout project was to beautify the area around the sign off the corner of Farmer Market Route 312, just to show you a little floor picture. Yes, it was taken with my phone. I know the quality isn't that great. So you can see the sign there really blends into the school, not really much, but timeline elapsed, worked last from June 1st to this past Saturday, September 21st, over about three months. We planted, started by planting three trees on June 1st, and then work really froze until mid-July, between the end of school, vacation, and just a whole lot of planning issues. It's hard to get people to come out and work, especially in the beginning of summer. Then from the month, we're from July 15th to August 19th, we completed the majority of the work, the circles, the borders around the trees, the areas were dug, leveled, and constructed. And then, actually, wait, it's a much more colorful phase. Colorful slide. If you would like to see that. And then for from August 19th to September 20th was really the big cleanup phase of my project, cleaning up the giant pile of item four. I planted the grass, I planted grass seed down to revitalize the areas that had become pretty much dead from the tarps that I left there, the item four, and it's all came back beautifully. And this past Saturday, we planted the shrubs, plants, and finished the project. So to show a little after. It's a big chain from the beginning. I have a slide at the end of this to show side by side comparison. And cost of this project, roughly around $7,000 total. Around $5,500 was donated. I really gave a big shout out to ELO for donating all of those products to me. Without that, that would be a lot more fundraising work, which I'm going into now to help fuel mine in my parents' pocket. I don't have that kind of money right now. And 427 hours were spent on this project from roughly the time of its start to its end. This is including me coming here for meetings, me meeting with, I come in to share Mr. Perry Burito, and Mr. Carlson, Mr. Bates, and last year with Mr. Spudma, and 37 people. I have a whole community service spreadsheet that I have to keep track of, from various scouts, leaders, my friends and family. We spent a lot of time and effort on this, and this is a little fore and after picture to show you. Anyone have any questions for me?
I think you did an incredible job, and the pictures definitely don't do it justice because it looks incredible, and we're so thankful that you, you know, were so thoughtful to come to us with this project, and we're so appreciative of you and everyone who contributed towards this. It's really incredible. Thank you.
Good job there. Thank you.
One last question. How can we help reimburse you, you know, through donations? How can I personally help replenish?
You cannot replenish my pocket as per Eagle Scout rules. The biggest help, I will reach out to you guys and let you know when my foster fundraiser is. Having the word spread for that, that would be really nice, and that would be really helpful for me, as I kind of want to get all of my fundraising done in one shot to try and limit the amount of paperwork I have to do, the time it takes for me to set up things.
So yeah, so let us know when we have dates.
I will. I will. Thank you for all that you've done for me by letting me do the project, and thank you for already saying yes to helping me out.
Okay, and now we move on to our district and Board of Education goals for 2019, 2020. And just first to give a little explanation to how our goals work. They are yearly goals that the board comes up with working with our superintendent to lay out the vision for the year for the district. And then, of course, the board comes up with its own goals in terms of what we need to do better in our role as board trustees. And the district goals, for us, you know, we have our strategic coherence plan. It's a five-year plan. We are in year four of that plan, so that helps guide the work that we do need to do. And then we also look at, you know, what other things are standing out that we need to address for that, for the particular year that we're in. And so we're just, we're going to go over them, and I guess I'm the one who's starting? Where is that? Perfect. So to start off, I want to say thank you again to the community for participating in the survey that we put out last year. We did go over it at one of our meetings last year in terms of kind of outlining different things that community members have commented on, areas that we can maybe focus more on, improve on, or even things we were doing, you know, good. So we pulled from that, and we're going to continue the work that we started last year and just build on that. So for us, we came up with three more goals for this year. The first one, increase communication with all constituents. So we talked about, you know, it's, the world's changing. Social media's a thing now. I mean, how can we better communicate? What can the board do? We discussed including some sort of news, a part of us, there'll be a newsletter piece component to this later, but we'll have a piece to that newsletter. So that's something, there's a board corner, that information's coming from us directly and perhaps quarterly, that we can just give a board perspective to the community directly so that everything's not just coming from the district, and that our voices, you know, are also heard, and that we don't appear to just be silent. We also discussed just improvements. I mean, I think, I hope everyone's getting to the website. We haven't gotten any yet, but there are links in there. You can just click on and send us information or updates or comments or anything through that as well. And we also talked about doing another survey again in like early spring, I think, right? Yeah, around March. So to give us a little time for everyone to observe how we're doing this year and just kind of give comments and feedback again, and we use that to help the work we do. Increase Board of Education presence within the community. So this year, we already started. We were at the Fall Festival, and we had a table, it's a little makeshift, because we did this, and we came up with the ideas, and we're there. Next year, we'll make it even better. And we also discussed, I think it was, was it once a month for us to get out into the community? So we still have to have that discussion and figure out a good location, but we would like to actually physically find a space within the community on the weekend, perhaps a Saturday, where we can just be, you know, having coffee at a particular location, which we make sure was noticed well, for maybe a two-hour window, and the board members would take turns, and it would just, again, give an opportunity for people to come and have a conversation, share thoughts, and, you know, of course, any board member sitting there can't make any decisions or there's no action. It's just a kind of a personal exchange that we would allow for. And I think that would get her that piece, and we'll build on that as well. And then increase Board of Education presence within the district. Just, I mean, there are so many events, there's so many things on the calendar, and we would just like to make sure that we are always at something amongst the seven of us, at least some board presence, as well as being able to tour the classrooms more and just getting in the buildings more, and seeing what's going on, so we can report back to the community. So I think I covered it all. Any, just do you want to add anything that I missed? So we'll be, we'll be sending out, I think, a letter, just kind of making sure everyone's informed what we're doing and where we are. And we also understand that it's all new. You know, I've talked to other districts that have done things like this. It takes a while for people to kind of understand and be okay with it not just being a board meeting, there being other avenues of communicating with the public. So that's the goal. Okay, so just as the board of trustees read the survey, listened to the survey, so did our administrative team. We had a board retreat where I was able to listen to, you know, many of the things that had went on at the survey, what are the needs are in the community. And then the administrative team also had a retreat for three days. We did a lot of great, wonderful educational things, but one of the big things we talked about was what are the Board of Trustee goals, and what are going to be the district goals? And how can we work together as a team to move this beautiful ship or booster? There's a lot of great things going on already, but how to move forward? So the first thing that we talked about, the first goal, would be to honor the past, to implement year four the Strategic Coherence Plan, which you've all done a fantastic job with. But now we want to start to talk about student outcomes. How do we hit the ground running and start to create student outcomes within the classroom and throughout the district? So one of the things we're going to be looking at is Dr. Gosh, oh my gosh, Dr. Gosh is going to be working with me. Get it to no name, so you gotta go to his company. We are putting together a Strategic Coherence Plan Steering Committee. If you are interested, please let us know. We want the community, we're going to be talking with that steering committee and deciding on a plan, either the three-year plan or a two-year plan, whatever the committee decides. And what are the student outcomes? What are we going to be getting out of our Strategic Coherence Plan for our kids in the classroom? So that's the first goal. Goal number two is community relations, and I love that my principals are going to be coming out with their teams over the next couple of months to share their building goals. And I love the fact that many of them are embracing our goals, so we're all working together as a team. So the first is bridging the gap between the district and the school community. We, the buildings are already sent, some of them are sending out newsletters. You'll notice some of the great posts that are out there already. We have a lot of terrific things as far as communication going on. I'm going to be starting a key, a community key communicators committee. So I will be reaching out to the community at large, trying to get representation. If you're interested, let my boss, Susan Gavin, know if you're interested in being on the committee. We're going to meet probably three times a year. It is a great venue for us to open the lines of communication between what's happening in the district and what's happening in the schools with the community. So we continue to work together, so that is going to be great. Also, public relations, we are pulling all of our public relations together. I'm meeting with our public relations person we have from Bosse's on a monthly basis, talking to the principals, making sure we have one voice, that we're all working together. So you're going to be seeing more and more of the social media, and then you're seeing one, one voice coming out from the district website, or Twitter, or Facebook, and Jim has been, Jim Trulore's been excellent with helping with that as well. So that's our other district goal. And the third district goal is increasing the leadership capacity. We have fantastic leaders in this district. Fantastic. I'm honored to be here. I'm thrilled, not only my executive team, but every single building. So we are, we've created a faculty advisory council where we have leaders throughout the district that come to the table, and we talk about, we have a set agenda, we talk about all the good things that are going on in the district, and we talk about what are some of the really hard conversations that we have to have together. How do we work together to move this district forward for the students? The focus is always the kids, and that's, that's the purpose of that committee. Also, for continuing, because I know you've done a great job with this in the district, but we're going to continue to provide meaningful professional development for district leaders throughout, to help rise up everybody, to help focus on the students, but to make sure that we're continuing to provide that. So there's, things are always changing, so we want to continue to be on the cutting edge. And then building the capacity and trust amongst all of us. So you'll be seeing that throughout the theme throughout the year. I'm going to, as your superintendent, I'm going to continue to listen, to learn, and to hopefully continue to move in the right direction for you. So in closing, last thing I want to do is, we had a great video that was put together not by me, but by our IT and T principals, just to give you a little quick touch of, a glance of opening day. Thank you. Okay, and we now move on to our discussion on RFP process for legal services. Mr. Carlson?
Okay, so Dr. Vanlo asked me to just give an overview to the board and the community about the request for proposal process in lieu of our upcoming legal services RFP. So on Board Policy 5410 basically outlines the requirements of the district in terms of requesting services, professional services. What are professional services? You see here, here, list a few, architects, engineers, accountants, fiscal consultants, lawyers, underwriters, et cetera. Those are just a couple of examples. In determining what actually represents a professional service, there are a couple of rules of thumb. Most importantly, the first one is, are those services subject to professional licensing through the state of New York? Obviously, in terms of legal services, there's the bar exam for accountants, it's a requirement that they become certified public accountants, et cetera. Whether or not there's a substantial form of education or training in order to perform that service, the service requires a personal relationship between the individual and the Board of Education. So those are just a few of the rules of thumb that go into determining whether or not something constitutes a professional service as opposed to just a general service. The evaluation, again, I'm continuing on with Board Policy 5410, the evaluation of such proposals will consider price along with other factors. So the important distinction between the purchase of goods and the purchase of professional services is that cost is not the sole determinant. Sole is one of, or, excuse me, price is one of the determinants, but is not the sole determinant. Also, taken in consideration is the special knowledge or expertise of the professional service, or the, I'm sorry, the consultant service, the quality of the service provided, the staffing. the staffing needed, and the suitability for the district's needs. Again, those are very broad, broad categories that are outlined in our Board Policy. Prior to that, the district would have to identify the prospective proposers. So again, making the distinction between a, a public bid for a specific item or group of items and a professional service, for a public bid, we would go out and say, we need this item, what will you pay for it? And the district is bound to take the lowest cost offered in order to purchase those, those products. An RFP for professional services, while we certainly take cost into consideration, it's not the sole factor in making that decision as it is for the purchase of goods. So that's a very important distinction that needs to be made. So again, we have Board Policy that follows general municipal law. Oddly, there is no set of rule, in rules in general municipal law that says you must go out to RFP for professional services every certain number of years. However, best practice is to go out at least every five years. There's only one case in which the general municipal law says that you must go out every five years, and that's for external audit services. Other than that, again, it's just a best practice to go out every five years. Evaluation criteria is another best practice. Again, Board Policy outlines very broad evaluation criteria. Best practice is in the, the actual document itself that you're soliciting proposals from, be explicit in the criteria that you're using to judge them. But another important thing to note, although the criteria is objective, the evaluation of the, of their responses is ultimately subjective to the people who are evaluating. And again, unlike rigid competitive bidding, cost is not the main criteria, although it's certainly one of them, it's not the main criteria for awarding a contract. So in terms of the upcoming legal services RFP, here are the criteria that we've established in our draft of what the RFP will look like. Of course, this is subject to the board's input and what the board ultimately determines are the most important criteria. So the first criteria that we have is evidence of successful experience serving as counsel to other school districts, Bosse's or local municipalities, which are similar in size and demographics to Brewster Central School District. So if you're representing another district that's very similar in nature to Brewster Central School District, that's obviously important to us because they'll have experience in dealing with some of the challenges that we face. Evidence of thorough knowledge, understanding, and ability to interpret education law and all of these other laws, this is really boilerplate, it's, you know, this, this is really as basic as it gets, making sure that they have, that their practice actually performs education law as opposed to just being a general counsel for, you know, a commercial entity. Evidence of ability to effectively and efficiently respond to questions posed by the board superintendent, we would really get that from reference of other school districts and making sure that they respond in an expeditions manner. Evidence of participation in different, uh, the development of educational law, obviously that's important in terms of lobbying efforts that are performed by, you know, NISBA or any of the other different educational associations out there, making sure that this firm has contact with them and is involved in those types of movements. Finally, evidence of active membership in those professional organizations that promote the spirit and interest of educational issues, again, you know, NISBA and, you know, all those different organizations. Finally, pricing, of course, is an important factor, but again, it's not the sole, sole factor. And then the interpreter, the verbal presentations to the board, the ability of the board to interview and ask questions, that'll certainly play to board's decision of which firm to choose. So what I presented is a tentative timeline. Again, everything here is presented as tentative because it, we really rely on the board to give us direction to finalize the RFP. But tentatively, we have an issue date Friday, January 3rd, due date six weeks later, February 14th. We record interviews on the executive session on February 25th and March 10th, and that will allow the board to award a contract on March 24th, which would, if the board chose to select another law firm, would allow us to provide 90 days to our existing firm of our notice of cancellation of contract. Any questions from the board?
No, I think you, you nailed it.
It's a lot, and, you know, we, we spoke a little bit in our audit committee meeting this morning about the process, RFP process. Maybe not so ironically, but the controller's audit, their focus area is on the procurement of professional services, so it's very timely that we go out to RFP for not only our legal services, but architectural engineering and all those other, you know, professional services that were outlined earlier. So it's actually good timing that we're going to go down this road and, and, you know, this along with several others.
I know you said the dates are tentative, but the issue date of January 3rd is, I don't know what goes into it on your end to prepare it, but is, is that something that can get moved up, or do you?
It could certainly, it could certainly get moved up. My, my thinking was rather, you know, if we were to award a contract, I mean, you know, nine months in advance is that, you know, is that, I mean, it's not unnecessary, but just thinking the, the timing of it. But we could certainly move it up. The RFP itself is substantially complete. Again, you know, just making sure that the board is, is okay with those criteria that are outlined for evaluating. But the timeline is really at the discretion of the board. So if you, you know, collectively, if you'd like to move that up or change any of those dates, of, of course, that's at the board's discretion.
But I mean, when I think of the dates, I'm just, the only thing I, I mean, it's that, okay, I just, you know, it just, the school calendar and how that looks for us and when is it better or worse.
Yeah, I don't think changing law firms, if that's the way it would happen in the middle of a school year is a good idea with everything that comes at the end of the school year.
Well, the other things to consider for this year.
Negotiations and other things.
Exactly.
So that's, that's fine.
Again, you know, it, it, it makes no difference if it's all shifted up, and, you know, again, that is a good point about, you know, budget and those other things that start in the, you know, in the late winter. There's no harm in awarding a contract six months in advance of the, you know, of the effective start date. So if it is, you know, if it is your, probably if you move that up, you know, to closer to, you know, December, January timeline, you can certainly do that, so. But, but, you know, you can let, let Dr. Banlow know and she'll communicate that.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. Move on to public remarks. So if anyone has any comments they would like to make specific to just the action items on our agenda, you are welcome to come at this time, and you will have two minutes and please address the floor from the supporting areas. Thank you.
I'm nervous I haven't done this in a while. Hi. Hi, everybody. I am specifically addressing action item number five, approval of policies, which is policy 7220 and 7222. Policy 7220 does address graduation requirements and particular emphasis on high-achieving students. However, with our increased ENL population, does not address safety nets and pathways that are available for those students who may need to graduate with a local diploma, which is accessible to them, also to general education students, which most students in New York State don't know that. Also, under pathways to graduation, it does not remember, mention the CEDAS, which is now a pathway that can be used to replace a Regents' exam, most often in the state global history exam, which takes some of the burden of trying to pass five exams off to students if they can, you know, use CTE or the CEDAS to replace one of those five Regents' exams. Takes a little bit of pressure off them so they can concentrate on some of the more difficult ones, particularly for our ENL population, the ELA exam is the, is the main barrier. It's only got a 35% pass rate in New York State for ENL students. People are looking at you like, who's this woman? Okay, as for policy 7222, you talk about the career development occupational studies credential, the CEDAS, which may be earned as a supplement to a Regents' or local diploma as a student's only existing credential. Yes, it can be used only as a student's existing credential. However, it is now a valid pathway to a diploma and can be used to replace a Regents'. And also for a student who has completed the curriculum in the five required Regents' classes with passing grades, but may or may not have passed all five Regents', with the superintendent's determination, and the CEDAS can apply to the school district to earn a local diploma, which is significant for our students with RFP. And I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Cool.
Because I can send you an email.
Anyone else have anything on our actions? Seeing none, we will move on to actions. Action number one, approval of appointment of voting delegate and alternate voting delegate for the NISBA convention, October 24th and 26th, not just a New York delegate, NISBA alternate. I guess I can take that. So as I mentioned earlier, we go up to the NISBA convention, it is basically the New York State School Boards Association, one senior convention that we go, and the entire state votes on the resolutions that NISBA will then advocate for the districts for that year and discuss some sunset, so somewhere like a three-year type, you know, agenda. And so we just have all those discussions and we vote on, what are the priorities, what are we facing, what are the issues? And we, you know, 700 districts vote on that. So we have to just designate us formally for who will be going, so myself, and then, should I get sick that morning?
Oh, you're not going to.
Does it, so I just need a motion in a second, please. Carrie and Glenn, thank you. Any questions or comments? Now you can say I'm not getting sick. Okay, seeing none, all is in favor. A motion passes 5-0. Move on to disposal of district property, vehicle number 215.
Yes, this is the, or the former service vehicle that was used to repair vehicles when they were out on the road. However, it wasn't exactly suitable for, for towing buses or carrying large tools for repair. It's a vehicle, again, it's over 20 years old with significant engine, engine damage, and we replaced this vehicle with a true service vehicle this past month.
Okay, great, thank you. I need a motion, please. Scott and Krista, thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor. Motion passes 5-0. Approval of code of conduct presented at the August 20th, 2019 Board of Education.
Yes, thank you. So at our August 20th Board of Education meeting, we held a legally required public hearing reintroducing our code of conduct. Since that time, we've had the draft code of conduct and a Google form posted on our website asking for feedback. We received two responses, one with one comment, which was to provide sort of a lay summary of the code to make it more accessible for students and parents. So while the building level codes of conduct stem from the district-wide code of conduct, they're much more developmentally responsive, I completely agree with that comment, and that is something that our Code of Conduct Committee has been working on, but will continue to work on for this school year. So in the meantime, I submit this for your approval.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion in a second, please. Carrie and Glenn, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor. Motion passes 5-0. Approval of overnight field trips, Brewster High School to Peru, February 14th through 22nd, 2020. Wells Middle School to Washington DC, May 6th through 8th, 2020. Brewster High School to Rome, December 27th, 2020, to January 3rd, 2021.
Yes, thank you. So we submit for your approval, these three overnight trips. The first is our annual eighth grade trip to Washington DC, which as you mentioned, takes place next May. We're using the same company that we have in the past, World Strides. A second trip is to Peru, which will take place over February break in 2020, approved. Sid Ventures brought to you by the duo who brought us the Iceland trip last year, Mr. Schmidt and Mrs. McCarthy. So the exciting itinerary includes Machu Picchu and several cities throughout Peru. And the final trip that we submit for your approval is a trip to Rome, which is in 15 months from now, December of 2020 and January of 2021. The trip is for the marching band who will have the honor of performing at St. Peter's Square for the Pope. These performances will take place on New Year's Day during the World Day of Peace, and students will, of course, visit other cities in Italy as well. So all three of these trips have met Mr. Carlson's stringent policies and guidelines for overnight trips. And we sincerely thank the staff members who have gone above and beyond, taken the time, undergone extensive effort to get to.
Hey, we are not in a temporary timeout, almost not really fired. We're all okay. Did you want to finish?
I think.
Won't you start over, because we've been listening.
The trips are good.
Yes, they meet all of our requirements. We submit that for your approval.
Thank you. So I just need a motion, please, in a second. Carrie and Krista, thank you. All is in favor. Motion passes 5-0. Approval of policies, first read, 1510 public participation at board meetings, 5681 school safety plans, 5683 evacuation emergency drills, bomb guards and bus emergency drills, 7220 graduation options, early graduation accelerator programs, 7222 diploma or credential options for students with disabilities.
Yes, thank you. So these policies have been reviewed, discussed, and recommended by our policy committee in response to Ms. Kirkvoss's specific comments. This is why we have two reads for policies. So I might propose that the board take a vote on the policies as a first read tonight. Her and I conference, take the feedback back from the policy committee, and then bring that forward for, bring that forward for review, if that works.
Okay, a motion in a second that we can discuss. So a motion first, Glenn and Scott, thank you. So questions and comments? So yeah, I think that's fine, because it's just, I am looking, it's just a first read for all, so that's fine, because the point isn't a first read to provide comments. So it's a meeting too, we can, you know, make adjustments still. It's the second read that becomes the final, right? Yeah. And then the other thing I just wanted to comment on, 1510 public participation, well, this is where we're discussing the three-minute proposal, so at our, was it our previous board meeting, or two meetings ago? I'm not sure. We discussed adding, making it three minutes instead of a two-minute rule, and so that amendment is part of this first read. And good thing we all reviewed this, because we just had our emergency drill timed in. But yeah, so I'm good with, with your suggestion, Michelle, as well. Any other questions, comments, or anything? No, okay, seeing none, all is in favor. And motion passes 5-0. Approval of MOA with BTA for game club, approval of MOA with BTA for driver's education program. Mr. Harrington.
Sure, so this first MOA reflects just growing opportunities in our high school, the game club for the BTA contract in terms of adding extracurricular activities. The second MOA reflects a growing knowledge of the longstanding driver's education program at Brewster, and provides an opportunity for our BTA membership potentially with the right, of course, credentials in the future to secure that and as an opportunity for, to provide that service to our students.
Thank you. I need a motion, please, in a second. Krista and Carrie, any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor. Motion passes 5-0. Number seven, approval of director of facilities to contract, is that number two? For G. Frayer, Mr. Harrington.
Okay, so we are pleased to present Mr. Frayer to the board this evening. Mr. Frayer comes to us from Pauling as the Director of Facilities. He is a resident of the community with children that had, I believe, have graduated from the Brewster schools. He is a graduate of East University and moved up in his career, starting as a custodian, and moving into eventually the role that he presently holds as the Director of Facilities in Pauling. It's also worth noting that he is the president of the Regional Association of Director of Facilities, so he has quite an extensive and large network. Certainly one, certainly one who thanked the board for their participation in the process and particularly expressed my gratitude to Mr. Carlson for his good work in helping to move a very thorough process for him. We had a number of applicants and a number of applicants with some real rich experience, and Mr. Frayer emerged as the best candidate and best candidate for Brewster.
Thank you. I need a motion, please, in a second. Krista and Glenn, thank you. Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion passes 5-0. Approval of.
Mr. Freyer's here this evening.
He was busy fighting the fire.
He gave you your first chance to look good.
Okay, action item number eight, approval of contract addendum with Patton Northern Westchester Bosse's for interim administrator, Mr. Harris.
Sure, so this action item reflects, reflects the leave of absence in, at JFK. Dr. Zampolin has communicated to the parents of JFK and Mr. Conroy's absence through December. We had an opportunity when we learned of the available retirees to secure Ms. Nadine McDermott. I think I'm speaking for both myself and Dr. Zampolin, when I can say that we felt quite giddy, because Dr., excuse me, Ms. McDermott has an incredible reputation amongst our network of elementary principals. She comes to us as a retiree from Todd Elementary School in Briar Cliff. Certainly, Todd Elementary School is a noted blue ribbon school, she has eight years of experience as a school principal. Dr. Zampolin will be sending out a letter to the school community welcoming her, we anticipate, you know, again, based on the Board's approval, that she will be visiting with our students on Friday.
Okay, thank you.
If I could, I also just want to note that this service, because it's provided by Bosse's, the district is eligible for Bosse's aid on this poster.
Thank you. Motion, please, in a second. Carrie or Krista, questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, and motion passes 5-0. Move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Harris, I think you covered some of that earlier in your opening comments, yes?
Yes, just a note, an apology to the error, I believe Ms. Hussey is with us this evening. She's noted on the Board agenda for a leave of absence, she is at Wells Middle School, not JFK. And just also a note of congratulations to our retirees that are noted on the Board agenda, Scott Field, Janice Triscoll, Deirdre Hollick, and Lorna Rubin, as we get ready to celebrate their kind of appearance.
Thank you. Any motion, please, in a second. Scott and Carrie, thank you. Questions or comments? So, but yeah, so the, I have to open it to see, it's written as JK on there?
He signed it with JK, Ms. Hussey, at Wells Middle School, so we'll need to correct.
So I just need, actually, I think I need to make a, because the language has to get changed, even though it's an error, just to help people know about it, so I just need to make a motion in a second, that to say Wells instead of JK. So can I just get a motion for that? Carrie and Glenn, thank you. All's in favor to amend the language, 5-0. Okay, now we can go back to passing it. So again, I just need another motion in a second for both three, that is fine. And then all is in favor for the consent agenda, and it passes 5-0. Thank you, sorry about that. Okay. Okay, we now move on to remarks. So public remarks, currently still two minutes, and anyone who would like to comment, please feel free to come up, state your name, address the Board, and, yeah, welcome. Okay, Krista? Okay. Well, then, that's what we want. So some of you may have noticed that we changed the agenda a little bit, just to be, again, a little bit more, to help with how we communicate during remarks. We used to have our board remarks, it was all just kind of lumped together, and we just separated a few things out of there, so next up is summary of email communications to the Board. So this is just the time where we will just, I'll comment on emails that we received between meetings, and it's no, nothing identifying in terms of who or any of that, but just the theme of the emails. So in the past two weeks, we received one email just commenting on the proposed NICE Ed increase, and I know that we were going to follow up with more conversations as a Board, but yeah, I don't know, Victor, you want to have any comment you wanted to make on there, just in terms of, no? Okay. Yeah, and that was it, it was actually a quiet two weeks. Let's see what else. Move on to board remarks and Board of Education Committee updates. Anyone? Oh, yeah.
Wanted to let everyone know that Superintendent Bando and I met with Senator Harkins' office, they had a meeting at one of the district schools, and they just meant to deal with the different districts, their problems were, what they were looking at, and what kind of help. He was very receptive, and he's taken all the information in, and he, once he gets more information, he wants to call people back together and give us updates on what's going on. I did want to make mention that some of the school districts had a more personal connection with them, I guess, because they speak to him more, or they send out more notices, so maybe it would be in our best interest if, as a Board, maybe we send out communications or letters to our representatives, different offices or such, as part of, you know, the person communication, because it seems the more they hear about you, the more they know about you, then the more they'll meet with you, because some of these schools actually said, yeah, we didn't have to wait till a general meeting, he actually came to our district personally, so there's different, you know, things maybe we can do to increase that. And related to that, last week I went to the Village Board meeting to introduce forward and just say that, you know, thank you for meeting with the Superintendent at the Fall Festival, and that part of the outreach, and this week I have a meeting with the, Southeast has a meeting, and Pauling has a meeting, so I'm just going to go the same thing, just go introduce myself to them and just say, you know, what we're looking to do, just in case they have any questions.
Okay, great, thank you. And you, you know, I should bring up a good point, because we used to have, I think Senator Murphy in here all the time, we invited him, and we were constantly asking, you know, for things, but it's a, it's a fair point, and I think we should absolutely get on board with that, and just invite him in district, and I think we did this many years ago, we include students, and, you know, we just sometimes have a round table, and we can decide how we want to do it, but I think that'd be a great thing to do, and get on this now. So thank you for coming.
I just wanted to bring up the Nutrition Committee, which I'm on, and I really cannot make, the meetings are generally like 11 o'clock in the morning, ten o'clock, something like that, and I'm having trouble making them on any regular basis, so I wanted to first see if there's someone else who wants to take it over, and possibly also discuss whether it's a committee that requires a board member, I know, you know, there's tons of committees that we don't have a board member that sits on, and it's not to undermine what they're doing, it's a great committee, they're talking about, you know, healthier lunches, and physical education initiatives that they're taking, the, you know, Heart Week, everything, it's all great stuff, I just am not showing up, so I don't like that. So I just wanted to raise it as a discussion as to whether someone can take it over, or, you know, whether we continue having a member on it.
From an administrative perspective, do you find that having a board person there helps in conversations, or is...
Yeah, I just looked up the policy, because of course, there's a policy for every single thing that we ever talked about, and the policy does mention that a board representative should serve on the Policy Committee.
And so they generally meet at 11?
You know, it's 10 or 11, you know, if it's eight in the morning, I can make it, when it starts to get in the middle of the morning, I just can't do it.
And historically, that's typically when the committee meets, because it's really outside of the, you know, the serving times, it's after, you know, after breakfast, but before lunch.
It completely makes sense, it just doesn't make sense to my employer.
What else do you need, is just then sending an email to the group, and because we have two trustees not here, and.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah, we'll figure that out. Okay, so thank you.
All right, thanks.
Anyone else? Okay. Up next, upcoming meeting, so our next meeting is October, I'm sorry to break it down, I'm distracted with the fire, fires. Say, I apologize. October 15th, okay, so our next board meeting is 15th, I'm just looking to see real quick if anything is happening between now and then. Nothing that's standing out, other than the open houses that still remain that we will continue to attend, I think that's pretty much what's taking over these, yeah, so just the open houses that we're just attending, okay. And last thing is if anyone still has any comments you'd like to make, you may email the Board, and Superintendent at BOE@brewsterschools.org, and we do need to make a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of reviewing an appeal, a decision of the Superintendent's disciplinary proceeding, and we will be returned to take action on that, it will be reported, it's like, that will be the only thing on that can fully officially close. So I just need a motion in a second, please. Krista and Glenn, thank you, all is in favor, motion passes 5-0 to adjourn to executive session, and we're off to have that discussion, so thank you. Okay, we need, I need a motion in a second to open our public session. Krista and Glenn, thank you. And hold on, we just checked the time, it's 9:24. Okay, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, six, zero. Eric, welcome back.
Thank you.
Okay, and now, number H, or letter H, actually, literally, action item number one, Appeal of Decision in Superintendent's Disciplinary Proceeding Resolution, be it resolved at the Board of Education of the Brewster Central School District, hereby affirms the Superintendent's decision and suspension of student number 9242019 issued pursuant to an education law of 3214 Superintendent's Hearing, and further authorizes the Board President to inform the parents of student number 9242019 of its decision. I need a motion in a second, please. Scott and Carrie, thank you. Any questions or comments on this action item? So now we just go to a vote, all those in favor of this resolution, motion passes 6-0. Thank you. And now, just adjourn, we just need to, a motion to adjourn. Carrie and Glenn, thank you. And all those in favor, motion passes 6-0, we are adjourned at 9:26.